It is one o'clock and we appear to have quorum if we want to begin.
Good afternoon and welcome to the City Planning Committee Commission Remote Special Public Meeting. Mr. Secretary, please begin the meeting.
Yes, and good afternoon, Chair Lamont. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Good afternoon, all. This is the City Planning Commission's Special Public Meeting held remotely through the NYC Engage Portal. Today is Monday, October 18th, 2021. I will now call the roll. Chair Lamont.
Here.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Bernie.
Here.
Commissioner Capelli.
Here.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Here.
Commissioner Dweck. Commissioner Dweck is absent. Commissioner Edie.
Here.
Commissioner Knight. Commissioner Knight is absent. Commissioner Levin.
Here.
Commissioner Marine. Commissioner Marine. Oh, Commissioner Marine is present.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Marine. Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Rappashad. Commissioner Rappashad is present. Thank you, Commissioner Rappashad. A quorum is present. The first part of the calendar is the reports section on page one. Borough of Manhattan, calendar numbers one through six, CD five, calendar number one, C two one zero four one two ZSM. Calendar number two, C two one zero four one three ZSM. Calendar number three, C two one zero four one four ZSM. Calendar number five, four, C two one zero four one five ZSM. Calendar number five, N two one zero four one six ZRM. Calendar number six, C two one zero four one seven PPM. In a matter of applications for special permits zoning text amendment and disposition of city-owned property concerning 175 Park Avenue. For favorable reports on calendar numbers one through six. Chair Lamont.
I vote yes and very delighted to do so, very happy to see this pass before us. It utilizes a number of the mechanisms that we put in place with respect to the Greater East Midtown rezoning. And we're very happy to get a very substantial infusion of cash into the Public Realm Improvement Fund with respect to this. So I'm very happy that we're approving this today.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
I agree. I vote yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Well, I mean, I concur with everything the chair said with respect to the benefit to the subway and with the respect to the funding for the public space fund. But on the other hand, you know, I'm generally speaking not opposed to tall buildings and I'm generally speaking not opposed to density. But my feeling about this project is that it's really just a bridge too far. Where we could have had a plaza between Grand Central and the Chrysler Building. We have a building that will completely overpower both. And we have a public space that's elevated so far above the streetscape that it's questionable whether it will ever really serve as a proper public space. And, you know, a number of people have commented that the project should be reduced in scale and those calls have gone unheard and I'm very uncomfortable with it and for that reason I feel compelled to vote no.
Commissioner Capelli.
I vote yes and I wish to congratulate the new chair in joining us here today.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Recused.
Commissioner Edie.
Echoing the comments of the chair, I'm very pleased to vote yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes, but I believe Commissioner Knight has also joined us.
Commissioner Knight is present. Commissioner Knights.
Yes, very pleased to vote yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Knight. Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rappashad.
Let's ask if he can raise his hand. He seems to be having some audio issues. Reach out.
He did raise his hand.
Commissioner Rappashad.
He's giving us a thumbs up. Okay.
Commissioner Rappashad votes yes. Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers one through six. Calendar numbers seven and eight. Borough Brooklyn. Calendar number seven, CD three, C two one zero two seven six ZMK. Calendar number eight, N two one zero two seven seven ZRK. In a matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 1045 Atlantic Avenue. For favorable reports on calendar numbers seven and eight. Chair Lamont.
I vote yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knights.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Well, I find myself borrowing the language of my colleague Commissioner Bernie in the previous vote. On this application, I believe that the R9A equivalent rezoning is a bridge too far. I would be fully supportive of upzoning to the degree recommended by the Community Board and the Borough President, namely an R8A. So in this case, I vote, but that modification isn't before us. I vote no.
Commissioner Marine.
I concur with the sentiments of Commissioner Levin. My vote is no.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rappashad.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers seven and eight. That concludes our voting items for this afternoon. Thank you, Commissioners.
If there's no other business before the commission, then this remotely held meeting is adjourned.
Meeting is adjourned. The time is 1:09 PM. Thank you, Commissioners.
Good afternoon and welcome to the New York City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, October 18th, 2021. The time is 1:09 PM and a quorum is present. The first item on our agenda is a referral of a non-U-LAR modification to a previously approved special permit and authorization in the Bronx Community District Six. Our presenter is James Morales.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This application before you is the Lambert Parcel Non-U-LAR Modification. It's located at 2082 Boston Road in Community Board Six. Next slide, please. The applicant is the FIPS Houses via their Boston Tremont Housing Development Corporation. As Ryan mentioned, this is a modification to two previously approved actions. One action was an authorization which was granted to height and setback requirements and to permit to distribution of floor area and open space across zoning lot lines and zoning districts. And the other one is a modification of a previously approved special permit which allowed minor variations in height and setback regulations on the periphery of the Lambert Houses' large-scale plan. Next slide, please. So the Lambert Parcel Five and the Lambert Large Scale is located in the West Farms neighborhood. It's just south of Bronx Park, which you can see in the aerial. The red outline is the parcel five outline of its entirety. You can see that there's an out parcel with buildings there. That's not part of the large scale. Presently, it has the old Lambert Houses on it, which are being replaced with modern new houses, which is all approved back in 2016. It's bordered by East 180th Street, Boston Road, and the number four and two trains to the south there. Next slide, please. Again, we see the parcel outlined red. It's just south of Bronx Park. To the west are R8 and R7 districts. It's multifamily, you know, mid-density to high-density. To the west, to the east, the zoning is predominantly manufacturing with industrial and manufacturing uses to the east. And again, the park is to the north and the train just to the south of it. Next slide, please. In this slide, we see the entire Lambert Large Scale Plan as approved in 2016. Again, we're only dealing with modifications in this application in the red outline parcel five. The approved parcel five consisted of two interconnected residential buildings. Building A and Building B in that kind of horseshoe-shaped. They're designed with 316,488 square feet. The total U-LAR approval of the floor area for this was 321,966 square feet. There being obviously a little extra approved floor area that they would like to use. It was also approved for 301 units at the time. Next slide, please. So the modifications are not too severe. I mean, they're not, they're minor modifications, non-U-LAR. For Building A, the building to the left of the horseshoe, so to speak. They're proposing to reduce the floor area from 60 floor plate area from 60 foot to 59 foot. And the same thing for Building B. By reducing the floor plate from 60 to 59 foot, they would free up approximately 14,392 square foot of floor area. And what they want to do with that floor area is firstly, propose a garage storage building to the southeast corner of the site there. A 4,206 square foot building and that, of course, would have a maintenance and garage facilities to maintain the courtyards of the large scale. The other thing they're doing with the extra square footage is they're proposing an additional floor in the building without raising the building height outside of the permitted envelope of the U-LAR. They're doing this by reducing the first floor height from 15 foot to 11 foot, one inch. The additional floor, which they call floor 1.5, which is right above it, would again have an 11 point, 11 foot, one inch floor to ceiling height. All the subsequent floors of Building B that are being changed would have the previously approved floor to ceiling height of nine foot, eight inches. Good to point out that these floor heights all meet the ZQA standard as approved in 2016. Next slide, please. So this is a waiver diagram. Here, we're looking down East 180th Street at Building 5B. The hatchmark in the upper right-hand corner is where it is piercing the heightened setback regulations and the hatchmark is what they're asking for in the waiver. The second, the second section is through the accessory building in the southeast corner. Next slide, please. Here, we're looking down Boston Road and again, we can see in the hatchmark on the right on Building 5B, where they are piercing the heightened setback regulations as well as the sky exposure plane in this particular waiver. Next slide, please. And here, we're looking down East 180th Street at Building 5A and again, we see the hatchmark, which represents where the waivers are being requested. And next slide, please. So to sum it up, the FIPS Houses requesting two non-U-LAR modifications to the previously approved authorization and to the previously approved special permit. The proposed one-foot reduction in the width of the floor area, a floor plate of Buildings 5A and 5B frees up approximately 14,392 square feet, which would then be applied to the additional floor and to the 4,206 square foot storage building. The total proposed new zoning floor area is 320,694 square feet. And again, the U-LAR approved zoning floor area was 321,966. They will not also be changing the the height, piercing the height of the U-LAR approved actions. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, James.
Sure.
Are there any questions from the commission for James? If not, oh, I can't, sorry.
Commissioner Ortiz has a question.
Okay, please.
Thank you for the presentation. So could you clarify what's happening on the first floor of Building B where we're going to see the reduction height?
They are reducing the original approval from approximately 15-foot floor to ceiling height to 11-foot one, then they're adding a floor above that of 11-foot one.
No, I understand, but what are the uses on the ground floor?
I don't, I don't have that approval. I don't know what the use is at that particular spot. I'll certainly get that to you.
Yeah. You know, we'll say generally a minimum ground floor to floor for retail would be 15 feet. So, you know, understanding whether that use would be impacted by the reduction of height would be important.
Absolutely. I'll definitely get that information to you.
Commissioner Marine, your hand is raised?
Yes. So question was asked and answered by Commissioner Ortiz, but I would also posit that, you know, reducing the height to 11 feet then limits what the future use can be. And I know that we went through extensive exercises to understand why we were raising first floor levels to 15 feet and that, you know, a commercial operation may come in, but I would also posit that the community center may come in that meets the 15 feet. So I happen to agree with Commissioner Ortiz that we should understand why the reduction in 15 feet and I'm sure they'll get back to us.
Hey, absolutely. One other thing, I'm sorry, this is one other thing I should mention. Just when they did the original design on this, the floor plates between Building A and B did not line up precisely. So one of the other reasons they're doing this is that by changing the two floor, floor plate heights, all the rest of the floors line up perfectly. So I think that had something to do to inform this, but again, we will get all the information about what the uses are on the ground floor.
Yes, and the reasons that they, any other reason?
What I understand that, that there's two different buildings. I'm sorry, I'm coming on Chair Lamont. I just, I have to ask another question. So if, if in fact, they're two separate buildings, why the need to try and make both both first floors? I mean, depending on, of course, the street level, the slope of the street, the reason why the two buildings don't line up. I mean, if they're really unnecessary, is there a need to have these? And again, this question can be answered later. But is there really a need to have the two commercials line up? Excuse me, these two first floors line up? So those are questions they can answer when they come in.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, if not, this will be referred to the Community Board for 45 days. Thank you.
Thank you.
The second item on our agenda is a post-referral review of a non-U-LAR modification of a previously approved authorization and a new authorization in Staten Island Community District Two. Our presenter is Joe Helford.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So this is a post-referral presentation for 2720 Highland Boulevard, which, as Ryan mentioned, was previously presented to the Commission Review Session on July 26th. Next slide, please. So this application submitted by Park Tyson Associates LLC is seeking three land use actions. The first, a non-U-LAR modification to a prior CPC approval. Secondly, a CPC authorization pursuant to ZR Section 36-023 to waive parking lot landscaping requirements for a group parking facility. And lastly, a chair certification per ZR 36-592 for cross-access connections in the borough of Staten Island. Next slide, please. The site is located along Highland Boulevard within the New Dorp neighborhood of Staten Island within Community District Two, along the Highland Boulevard Commercial Corridor. Next slide, please. The proposed modification would modify the vehicular circulation and the location of a previously approved parking spaces in order to introduce a drive-through for Building C highlighted here at the center of the site plan in red. Highlighted in orange throughout the site plan are additional modifications in other areas of the site that are designed to maintain compliance with the minimum parking requirements. In all, these modifications include the relocation of 15 parking spaces throughout the site, changing of a two-way drive aisle into a one-way drive aisle adjacent to Building C, and the introduction of the drive-through surrounding Building C. Additional striping and maneuverability for loading areas at the rear of the primary building adjacent to portion four, A4, and the removal of one curb cut along Tyson's Lane in the upper right-hand corner of the site plan. Next slide, please. The interim parking area adjacent to Building A5 triggers the parking lot landscaping requirements, which came into effect after the prior CPC approval was granted. So under this proposal, the interim parking area would comply with all parking lot landscaping standards and the authorization to waive the parking lot landscaping standards would be sought for select areas throughout the larger parking lot, which is vested from the prior 2003 approval. The following image shows the planting, which was voluntarily provided as part of that prior approval in blue, compared to the newly proposed planting in red. The applicant is providing landscaping on the balance of the larger parking area to the greatest extent possible, while also maintaining compliance with other parking requirements for the existing uses on the site. Next slide, please. Staten Island Community Board Two held a public hearing on the application on September 7th and held a vote on September 21st, recommending approval of the application by a vote of 22 in favor and one opposed. The applicant has also provided a memo to the commission, which addresses questions raised at July 26th Review Session regarding curb cuts on Tyson's Lane, parking lot landscaping, and pervious area used throughout the site. Thank you. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you very much, Joe. Are there any questions from the commission with respect to this?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I don't have questions. I just say how nice it is to have a presentation from Joe that I don't have 6,000 concerns about, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Sure, Joe appreciates that. Are there any other questions from the commission? If not, this will be scheduled for.
Okay, the third item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of special permits in Manhattan Community District Five. Our presenter is Aska Moyan.
Chair, I just indicating if we're on 415, I am recused.
Yes, Commissioner Cerulo is refused.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a private application by 415 Madison Avenue LLC requesting two East Midtown Subdistrict special permits to develop a new commercial office building with a public concourse. The site is located at 415 Madison Avenue in the East Midtown neighborhood of Manhattan Community District Five. The application was certified in July 26th, 2021 and is coming back to the commission for a public hearing on Wednesday. Next slide, please. 415 Madison Avenue is located on the corner of Madison Avenue and East 48th Street on the block bound by East 49th Street to the north, Park Avenue to the east, East 48th Street to the south, and Madison Avenue southwest. The development site is mapped with a C53 zoning district and is a base FAR of 15 for non-residential uses. The site is also within the southern subarea of the East Midtown Subdistrict of the Special Midtown District. The East Midtown rezoning was adopted by the CPC in 2017 for the goal of replacing the existing aging office building stock with new commercial development to ensure the area's future as a public, as a world-class business district. The area served by Grand Central Terminal located approximately four blocks to the south. The Long Island Railroad will also have a major terminus here known as Eastside Access planned for opening in late 2022. Next slide, please. The proposed development is a 591-foot-tall commercial office building comprising 287,000 zoning square feet or 24.6 FAR. It will accommodate an eastside access entrance and ground floor and an open-air public concourse. The public concourse shown in purple on the ground floor plan to the right is a 2,377 square foot space occupying the most prominent corner of the site. The concourse has been designed to encourage circulation from both furnaces with direct connections to eastside access entrance. It also includes a passive recreation space with various seating options and artwork. The eastside access entrance highlighted in yellow here has been designed in collaboration with the MTA. This entrance is of particular importance as it will provide the northernmost pedestrian access to the new concourse serving the Long Island available customers living or working anywhere to the north of the site as a closest entry point. A small retail pavilion of 330 square feet has also been provided, which will serve to activate the public concourse. The remaining portion of the ground floor footprint accommodates the critical functions of the commercial building above, including lobby on Madison Avenue, loading dock on 48th Street, back of house, back of house servicing, and building core. Next slide, please. You might recall this figure from when we last presented the project describing the action sequence associated with the proposed building. Via Greater East Midtown Chair certifications, the applicant is separately adding 6.6 FAR to the 15 FAR as a bright building to facilitate a 21.6 FAR building. These actions resulted in the recent contribution of approximately $4.8 million to the Public Realm Improvement Fund. The actions we are here to discuss today and the final actions to facilitate the proposed building is a request for two East Midtown Subdistrict special permits to enable the proposed 24.6 FAR office tower building. The first is a bonus floor area special permit pursuant to zoning resolution section 81645. This allows a bonus of up to three FAR to sites that provide a public concourse in association with development. The second is a waiver special permit pursuant to ZR Section 81685. This section enables sites in the East Midtown Subdistrict to seek modifications to certain regulations. In this instance, heightened setback, retail continuity, and street wall apartments. Next slide, please. This running shows the public concourse and eastside access entrance viewed from the corner of Madison Avenue and 48th Street, looking into the public concourse. The building lobby is on the left. The department has worked with the applicant team to ensure the design provides generous circulation, seating options, materials, and points of visual interest, as well as promoting view lines between public concourse, lobby, retail, and transit access components to ensure welcoming and active public space. Next slide, please. There were some questions and certifications that we wanted to follow up on. First, there were questions about the classification of the public concourse and enforcement mechanism to maintain its accessibility for the public. The proposed public concourse is similar to a POPs in function and design, but it falls under a different open space classification than a typical POPs. This approach is by design in the East Midtown text, providing flexibility for the space to fulfill its concourse function that a typical POPs would not enable. The public space will be governed by a restrictive declaration and the special permit plans. The concourse will be open 24/7 and will have signage in accordance with the recent law change, as with any POPs. There was also a question of the proposed signage for the east side access entrance. Since that space is subject to an easement controlled by the MTA, signage for the entrance will be provided by the MTA in accordance with their standards. Finally, there is a question about the potential for conflicts between the loading dock on 48th Street and the sidewalk. The applicant has confirmed that the loading dock will be operated during off-peak hours to minimize any conflict with the pedestrians. Given loading docks are not permitted on Madison Avenue, the proposed location is considered most appropriate here. Next slide, please. On September 9th, 2021, Community Board Five voted with 34 votes in favor, zero opposed, and one abstaining to approve the application. Next slide, please. On October 14th, 2021, the Borough President recommended approval of the application with conditions. These conditions include the applicant work to incorporate arts programming to activate the proposed public concourse and ensure the retail space in the proposed building be operated by a local business. Next slide. In summary, the applicant is requesting two special permits that will facilitate a 24.6 FAR special, a commercial office building. The project is inclusive of a new public concourse, major transit access point, and is consistent with the goals of the recently adopted Greater East Midtown Framework, which in particular seeks to replace existing aging office building stock with new commercial development. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Aska. Before I open it for questions, I do just want to note again how delighted I am to see this application because it again reflects the great success of our Greater East Midtown rezoning. Certainly, we all can agree that we're seeing more development than we anticipated at this early point post-enacting the rezoning. But this is an example of a project that utilizes a number of the mechanisms that we, you know, embedded in the rezoning. It includes chair certifications and special It includes chair certifications and special permits, as Aska just mentioned, and it will achieve a lot of our goals in terms of public realm improvements. Significant funding to the Public Realm Improvement Fund. Landmark upkeep with a significant funding of St. Bart's from which it receives some air rights. And it will include renewal of the aging office stock of East Midtown. It's the first project that we have looked at that includes use of the overbuilt provisions that we included in the text. And of course, you know, it will provide us with transit access by providing a north-end access to the eastside access. So I'm excited and can't, you know, contain my pleasure that this rezoning is working as we planned. So are there questions from the commission?
See Commissioner Levin's hand is up?
I'm having, mine aren't showing today, so I appreciate. Okay, Commissioner Levin.
Yes, thank you. Look, without throwing any shade on the chair's remarks about how great it is to see the the Greater East Midtown rezoning actually working, this is, this is pretty exciting. I am curious to know a little bit more about the planning work that went into the design of the concourse. Whether there are any precedents elsewhere in the city that will help us understand how this concourse will work. And my concern is, you know, thinking back to the arcades that we had to take away from Water Street down in Lower Manhattan because they turned into empty dark places that weren't very well utilized. You know, my concern is that we are designing space here that will truly be an advantage to the public and not a dark hiding place that is bereft of activity. So I'm sure that's something that has been thought through, doesn't need, I could hear it from the applicant on Wednesday. I don't know if the staff has any thoughts on that, but I'd just like to understand a little bit more about the thinking that went into the design of the concourse and, you know, how we can be assured that it really is going to be good public space.
Yeah, so the department did work with the applicant in terms of the design of the space and was a lot of backing forth and to ensure that the space was activated. So there is the provision of not only seating in terms of movable seating and, you know, and other movable tables and chairs, but also artwork. And in addition to that, a retail pavilion was also added to further activate the space. And the eastside access is also anticipated to have a large number of users which will further activate the space. In terms of other precedents for covered arcades, we can follow up with that.
Okay, well, thank you for that. You know, the three features you mentioned, the movable tables and chairs, the retail kiosk and the artwork. None of those are shown in the images that you just showed to us. It looks like kind of barren, sterile white space. So if those are going to be there, that does make it better.
Yeah, absolutely.
We'll ask the applicant to update their images so that it accurately reflects those things.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? So if not, this is on for public hearing on Wednesday. Thank you very much, Aska.
Thank you.
The fourth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a disposition of city-owned property in Manhattan Community District One. Our presenter is Stephen Johnson.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The New York City Department of Small Business Services seeks approval of a disposition of leasehold and easement interests to various city-owned properties located in South Street Seaport area, Manhattan Community District One. The disposition area is subject to a lease agreement between the city and South Street Seaport Limited Partnership, which if a renewal option is exercised, expires on December thirtieth, two thousand and seventy-two. This application would allow the city to enter into an amended and restated lease that will run through twenty-one, twenty, or an additional forty-eight years. The project was certified on July twenty-sixth and is back for pre-hearing review. Next slide, please. So the disposition area consists of Pier sixteen and seventeen, the Tin Building, the Fulton Market Building, Skirmer Home Row, Titanic Park, and the DMAP portions of Fulton Street between South and Water Street, Front Street between John and Beadman Street, and Water Street between Fulton and Beadman Streets. These streets are located in the South Street Seaport Subdistrict within the Lower Manhattan Special District. Next slide, please. All lots in the disposition area are located within the South Street Seaport Historic District and the coastal zone boundary, and all the lots are non-residential properties owned by the city of New York. Next slide, please. So much of the Seaport's current configuration and design dates from the nineteen seventy-seven master plan commissioned by the city in collaboration with the Seaport Museum and the Rouse Company, which emphasized commercial development in this area. So the master plan was adopted through a series of public approvals in nineteen eighty-one that included street demappings, an amendment to the urban renewal plan, and lease dispositions to the Seaport Museum and the Rouse Company. The term of the original lease would have expired on December thirtieth, twenty thirty-one, but it included options for extensions until December thirtieth, twenty seventy-two. The Howard Hughes Corporation acquired the Rouse Company's interest in the original lease, which is administered by the New York City Economic Development Corporation on behalf of Small Business Services. In twenty thirteen, the original lease was amended and restated between the city and South Street Seaport Limited Partnership to, among other things, provide further renovation and rehabilitation of Pier seventeen. The amended and restated lease was further amended twice in twenty seventeen. First, they added the Tin Building to the premises covered by the lease and conveyed a leasehold interest to the partnership. And second, the city and the partnership made certain operational changes and renovation commitments under the amended and restated lease. In twenty twenty, the amended and restated lease was amended for a third time to modify certain rights and obligations relating to the premises at one thirty-three Beadman Street and the DMAP streets. Next slide, please. So we're moving on to some of the images in the area. Pier seventeen includes public open space, restaurants, entertainment, and office uses. The Tin Building will have a culinary marketplace slated to open in early twenty twenty-two. And Pier sixteen on the right of your screen is leased by the city to the South Street Seaport Museum and is used for docking of historic ships and other vessels. Next slide, please. This block contains Skirmer Home Row and includes ground floor retail uses and other commercial uses, as well as the existing Seaport Museum. Each of these buildings on the site is individually landmarked. Next slide, please. We have an image here of the Titanic Memorial Park. It has approximately fifty-four hundred square feet of open space. Next slide. The Fulton Market Building has restaurants, retail, and entertainment uses. Next slide, please. These are images of the DMAP streets. The originally city-owned map streets were de-mapped in nineteen eighty-three by the City Planning Commission to spur economic development in the area and create a pedestrian plaza in a pred-friendly area. Today, the DMAP streets are maintained by the partnership and are activated with Garden Bar and other programming pictured in these pictures. Next slide, please. So on September thirtieth, Community Board One voted to disapprove the application with conditions by a vote of forty to none with two extensions. And a few of the conditions are listed on the slide here. They requested that the public benefits won with the entire term lease. The requested more recreation space, open space, and greening of open space, and also public access to the Pier seventeen area on the rooftop. They asked for the new market building should be a community center, and any funding by Howard Hughes Corporation should be going straight to the Seaport and not to the general fund. The Manhattan Borough President sent in a letter dated September twenty-third in support of the application. And next slide, please. So as part of the public benefits for the project, they've outlined a number of things that they're still negotiating with the city at this point. But I've listed a few here. These benefits include improvements to the unfinished portion of the East River Esplanade. This is north of the Pier seventeen Tin Building area. As you know, they're doing a whole new, the city's putting in a whole new esplanade. Greenway along the waterfront, and this part has not been mapped out yet. They are proposing to do improvements to Titanic Park. They're also would commit to completing birthing and maritime enhancements to facilitate ship docking at the Pier seventeen. So, and the final one is they're committing to some sort of security and fencing enhancements related to the new market site, which is right next to And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Stephen, thank you very much. Are there any questions for Stephen from the commission? Ryan, if you could note if you see any hands raised.
Yes, Commissioner Levin has her hand raised.
All right, Commissioner Levin.
Thank you, Stephen. The Community Board's recommendation includes a few additional modifications, mentions a few additional modifications to the lease beyond just extending the term. They refer to swapping retail space on Skirmer Horn Block with the Seaport Museum to occupy the prime corner location and the removal of the, oh, of the John Street Lot Right of First Offer. Since those both potentially have land use implications for us, so I'm not going to ask about the rent reset. That's not our concern on a land use front, but could you review with us all of the land use changes that are involved in this lease? Or could the applicant at the hearing?
Yeah, I think the idea is the applicant will be able to speak to that because EDC is negotiating those, those particular details. So they can discuss what exactly they're reviewing and negotiating on. And I think the ones that they've given me to present to you guys so far are ones that they've been
That they've nailed down.
So if there are further ones, of course, we could come back and discuss those.
Okay. And then a second question is, since we're, we're spending a lot of time thinking about movable development rights these days. Does this lease include the development, any unused development rights associated with any of this leasehold property?
No, not that I'm aware of.
So those continue to be, those continue to be owned by the city and the disposition would be controlled by the city?
I think so. You could, we can, you can ask EDC that at the
Okay.
hearing, but actions, other projects that are happening right now in that area are completely separate from this project.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions for the commission?
Commissioner Ortiz has her hand up.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes, um, small, minor point, but perhaps related to some of the requests by the community board. You know, I'm often in this area biking. There's obviously a bike trail that's very popular and the usage has increased significantly through COVID. And so, you know, the, the need for sufficient bike parking to enable improved access by alternate modes of transportation, I think, isn't, is, is critical. There is no place to park your bike safely when you arrive there. So just something to think about in terms of what needs to happen in the public room.
Yeah, that's an excellent point. I mean, one thing that they have done there is a lot of space and the DMAP streets. So I'm not sure where bike tour stations are located in that area, but I'll look into that and, and we can have a response for you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, any additional questions? Okay, if not, this will be on for public hearing on Wednesday. Thanks, Stephen.
The fifth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a text amendment and a post-referral review of an authorization in Queens Community District Twelve. Our presenter is Stephen Everett.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Go to the next slide, please. This is an application returning for pre-hearing after it was certified on July twelfth. It's a private application by Archer One LLC to develop an as-of-right mixed-use building in downtown Jamaica within the special district. And they're proposing to establish within the special district a CPC zoning authorization that would allow curb cuts on restricted streets in some limited instances and the concurrent use of that authorization to facilitate the establishment of a permitted loading berth for the development under construction. Next slide, please. The applicant team is currently constructing an as-of-right twenty-two-story building with ground floor retail and three hundred and fifteen market rate units with co-working space, a game room, fitness and yoga room, and accessory lounges. Next slide, please. An as-of-right curb cut on one Sixtieth Street would service an intended parking garage for the entire development. Adjacent to that would be the residential lobby, also on one Sixtieth Street. And retail uses are proposed for the majority of frontage along Archer Avenue. The area in gray is the as-of-right portion of the development. And on the east side of the development is a proposed curb cut measuring fourteen feet with splays that would service a permitted but not required loading berth. The berth would be accessible for delivery trucks for the retail establishment, as well as for tenants of the residential units for moving in and out and facilitating delivery access. It is only this portion of the development that would be subject to the proposed authorization for a curb cut. According to the applicant, absent the curb cut and loading berth, all deliveries, both commercial and residential, would happen curbside. And the proposed curb cut, therefore, would reduce rather than increase street congestion. Additionally, deliveries would require advanced scheduling, and an attendant would be present to maximize safety and ensure that there are no pedestrian conflicts. Next slide, please. The proposed text amendment would allow the CPC to authorize curb cuts otherwise restricted by the special downtown Jamaica district text, thereby restricting use of the authorization to properties within one of the restricted areas and only those properties with access to a non-restricted street. The commission must find that the proposed curb cut at any such location is not hazardous to traffic safety, would not create or contribute to serious traffic congestion or unduly inhibit vehicular movement, will not adversely affect pedestrian movement, will not interfere with the efficient functioning of bus lanes, specially-designed streets, and public transit facilities, and will be, and would not be inconsistent with the character of the existing streetscape. Next slide, please. Queens Community Board Twelve held a public hearing on September fifteenth and recommended approval of this application by a vote of twenty-one in favor, zero opposed, and zero abstaining. And on September twenty-third, the Queens Borough President held a hearing on this application and issued a recommendation for approval on September thirtieth. The applicant has also submitted a letter to the CPC outlining commitments made to Councilmember Ideneek Miller, noting that use of the loading berth would be pre-scheduled, and a flag person would be on-site during daytime hours to assist vehicles and ensure pedestrian safety, that the berth would not be used during morning or evening rush hours between seven and ten AM and four to seven PM, and that retail use of the berth would take place overnight between seven PM and seven AM. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take questions. Thank you.
Stephen, thank you very much. Are there any questions from the commission on this item? I don't see any. Okay, so if not, this item is also on for hearing on Wednesday. So thanks again, Stephen.
Thank you very much.
The sixth item in our agenda is our, is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map, zoning text amendment in Queens Community District Ten. Our presenter is Joy Razor, noting that Commissioner Ron Pishat is recused on this item.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners. Next slide, please. This application is returning to the commission for pre-hearing after it was certified on July twenty-sixth. This is a private application for a zoning map amendment from an R-three-A to an R-six-B, C-two-three zoning district, as well as a zoning text amendment to establish an MIH area in South Ocean Park, Queens, Community District Ten. Next slide. Here's an aerial of the surrounding area, and I want to note that in this image, north is to the right. The project area is indicated in black with a development site outlined in bread. The development site is approved with a two-and-a-half-story, single-family residential building built to an FAR of point three and is owned by the applicant. The area is loosely bounded by Liberty Avenue to the north, the Van Wick Expressway service road to the east, and one hundred and thirty-fifth Street to the west. Next slide, please. The applicant is proposing a four-story, twenty-two-thousand-square-foot building containing eighteen dwelling units, five to six of which would be made affordable pursuant to MIH. five to six of which would be made affordable pursuant to MIH. The ground floor would contain approximately 8,000 square feet of commercial space and 13 parking spaces would be available in the cellar for residential tenants. The development site would contain an FAR of 2.2 and rise to height of 45 feet. The applicant is seeking two actions, as I mentioned, a map amendment to rezone the project area from an R3A to an R6B C23 district, as well as a text amendment to establish an MIH area. Next slide. On September 2nd, Community Board 10 held a public meeting and voted in favor of the application with 29 in favor, one opposed, and no abstentions. On September 23rd, the Borough President held a public hearing for the application, and we are still awaiting a recommendation. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Joy. So are there any questions from the commission on the site?
Commissioner Ortiz has her hand up.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes, I was curious what kind of retail uses the applicant anticipates in the space that they're designing, because they're a little bit, you know, off the main strip. And it was a decision to put retail here rather than continue some of the contextual ground floor residential that we have. You know, you can see even in the rendering.
Sure, yeah, thank you for that question. And so they haven't, they don't have a tenant just yet, but they are thinking about a medical office space. There's a law office in the corner, so that would be sort of in line with existing office in the area or some sort of local retail.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the commission?
Commissioner Knuckles, Vice Chair Knuckles has this.
Vice Chair Knuckles. Thank you. Joy, I was wondering whether or not there might be a rendering that better shows the relationship between this proposed development and the parcel to the immediate north of it, which I think is a two-story building. I think it would convey a better sense of the relationship to the rest of the, of the site.
Sure, and can we pull the presentation back up? I actually, I used to have a massing in the presentation, and I don't have it anymore, but I can have the applicant show more context with that minimum property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? I don't see any, so thank you very much.
Okay, the seventh item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map amendment in Queens Community District 14. Joy will present this as well.
We can go to the next slide. This application is returning to the commission for pre-hearing after it was certified on June 7th. This is also a private application for a zoning map amendment from an M11 district to an M12 district to facilitate a new six-story self-storage facility located in the Arbor neighborhood of the Rockaways in Queens, Community District 14. Next slide. As you can see from this map, the proposed project area is located on the Rockaway Peninsula within close proximity of the A-Train, only half mile away from the Beach 67th Street Station. The project area is also located approximately three miles from downtown Far Rockaway. Next slide. This is a rendering of the site plan showing the proposed development. In this image, north is to the right. The proposed development would consist of two buildings, the first being Building A, which is an existing single-story, 34,500-square-foot light manufacturing building, and the applicant proposes no changes to the structure. The seven tenants currently occupying the space, who employ a total of 60 workers, would remain. The second building, Building B, would be a new six-story, approximately 146,000-square-foot self-storage building constructed east of Building A on the same site. Building B would contain approximately 960 storage units and would be elevated 15 and a half feet, raising it above the base flood elevation of 10 feet. The development would provide 34 total parking spaces and five loading berths. Due to the development site's location within the 1% annual chance flood plain, the ground floor entrance would also be dry flood-proofed in accordance with Appendix G of the Building Code. Permeable pavers would also be provided within the drive aisle in front of Building A to reduce pounding and flooding. While self-storage use is permitted in both districts, the current M11 zoning district allows for maximum commercial and manufacturing FAR of 1, while the proposed M12 district would permit an FAR of up to 2.0. According to the applicant, the proposed M12 zoning districts would be complementary within the surrounding M11 district and would incentivize development on lots currently used as outdoor construction storage areas. The applicant also believes that increased bulk is appropriate here due to the immediately surrounding industrial uses and the project area's location along Beach Channel Drive, as well as the elevated A-Train, which served to create a buffer between the project area and nearby residential uses. Next slide. The commission had requested information about ownership of land within the rezoning area at the June 6th review session, and this map shows a breakdown of the land within the area. The majority of the land, as you can see, is owned by the applicant, and a small sliver of the adjacent private lands, which is that orange area, will also be included. Approximately 18% of the area is city-owned, divided between de-cas and HPD. And I want to note that the city-owned lands consist of portions of the Rockaway Freeway, as well as the shoreline along Randworth Creek, neither of which can generate additional floor area. Next slide. When the self-storage text amendment was adopted in 2017, the EIS identified only one self-storage facility in the Rockaways, and the number of facilities has not grown substantially since then. Today, there's still only one existing facility. 10602 Rockaway Beach Boulevard, which is located about one mile from the project area, was certified on April 5th and would facilitate the second self-storage facility on the peninsula. Because the peninsula is almost entirely located within the 1% annual chance flood plain, Rockaway residents often don't have access to cellar space since new homes constructed must comply with Appendix G of the Building Code. Additionally, many homes have been elevated or retrofitted to be flood-resilient, which often eliminates any previously usable storage space. The proposed development would provide roughly 146,000 square feet of storage space, serving more than 700 households for residents to store sensitive and important items, as well as any construction materials for those who are still in the process of rebuilding their homes. Next slide, please. On September 9th, Community Board, Community Board 14 held a public meeting and voted to disapprove the application with 14 in favor, 12 opposed, and five abstentions. On September 23rd, the Borough President held a public hearing for the application, and we received the recommendation this afternoon to approve the application with the condition that the applicant address potential safety issues around traffic coming into the site as raised by the board, and also that the applicant work with DOT on some solutions such as a four-way traffic light or other methods that DOT would find satisfactory. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Joy. Are there questions from the commission?
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Well, thank you, thank you, Chair. I think Joy, to some extent, answered it. I was just curious about the strenuous objection of, of the Community Board. There were more opposed, when you count the opposition and abstentions, they outnumber those in favor, so I. Is there, is the concern of the board primarily traffic? I mean, this is a, and has been a manufacturing zoned area, so I was just somewhat surprised by the level of objection here.
Sure, yeah, thank you for that question. And so there's a lot of conversation at the board meeting, some of which was around traffic safety, but there were some concerns about the use's location along with the creek. And there is a question about whether there was a demand for self-storage in the area. And I can speak to some of the environmental concerns. So the applicants required by DEP to set the building 50 feet away from the shoreline and also has to comply with DUC regulations to provide mitigated plantings along the shorefront and to allow for infiltration of stormwater into the upland soil. They're also putting permeable pavers between Building A and Building B to reduce some of that pounding and flooding. And the applicant can speak more to this at the public hearing as well. The board also requested that the applicant speak with local civic associations, and they have begun their outreach with that, so they've already spoken with Rockaway Beach Civic Association, part of the Rockaways, as well as Hamel House's Tenant Association to work on recruiting local construction and permanent jobs on-site. And that was also at the request of the Borough President. And there were also a couple members of environmental groups who were concerned about the location adjacent to the nature preserve across the creek. And they had specific concerns about the shadows that may be cast on the preserve. But according to the EIS, there is no adverse impact. And again, the applicant's environmental consultant can speak more to this.
Commissioner Bernie?
Actually, I think Joy pretty much answered the question I was going to ask about the concerns about the nature preserve. I mean, did they have any specific request that they wanted to address that concern? Or was it just, don't build it here because we want to keep a nature preserve?
Sort of the latter, which is understandable, but there's also a lot of existing manufacturing uses, as Vice Chair Knuckles mentioned, that are already along the waterfront and also directly in front of the nature preserve.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ron Peshad.
Yes, both Vice Chair Knuckles and Commissioner Bernie asked the questions that I was thinking about. So thank you for clarifying further the Community Board's view on this. I look forward to hearing from the applicant on Wednesday. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, if not, this is on for hearing on Wednesday. Thanks again, Joy.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joy. So moving on to future votes. On Wednesday, October 20th, 2021, staff prepared reports on the Citywide Hotels text amendment, the Hotel and Fitness text amendment, the Fresh Update text amendment, Wynn Powers, 506 Third Avenue, the Special Brooklyn Navy Yard, Soho NoHo, and 250 Water Street. I see Commissioner Levin has raised her hand.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes, thank you. On, on 250 Water, two subjects to ask about. One is the late-breaking development revealed in the FEIS that we all received at the end of last week about the potential for theater use. And I admit, I recognize that this was mentioned at our previous review session. It was so deep in the session, I think most of us had our brains glazed over or something. I wasn't really on the ball, and I apologize for that. But the FEIS does indicate the possibility that the commercial space, the office space, may instead be used for a theater, which some of the language we've got refers to it as a used, categorized as commercial use, but would be used as a theater for a community facility. I'm wondering if there's anything more you could tell us about the nature of this theater use. I gotta say, I find the idea of replacing office space, which I imagine is pretty hard to develop these days, with a theater to be, a substantial theater to be used by a community facility as a very positive development or a commercial theater, that might be a different story. Do we know anything more about that? Than what is revealed in the FEIS?
Hi, this is Stephen Johnson again. So the applicant doesn't have any more details because they have been in discussions with a potential organization, university, to take over some of the space. And nothing is signed, nothing's been confirmed. So they just wanted to include it within the application to ensure that it's not precluded from the possibilities of having a university locate there that may have a theater associated with it.
Well, would it be appropriate for, I don't know if anyone agrees on this, but would it be appropriate to allow the theater use, but limit it to commercial facility theater use?
Community facility?
Community facility theater use? Is that consistent with what they're talking to you about? I just think a commercial theater opens up a whole bunch of other questions that we probably haven't thought about and puts me in mind of what's happened at Pier 17, where there is some surprise about the way in which the rooftop space is being used.
All I, all I can say concerning that is the discussions that I've been told that they've had are related to a school. So we can talk with our council on that and see, and with the applicant team and see if they have any insights on, on the issue.
Okay, well, before we send you down that hole, I guess I should ask my colleagues if they share any concern there. If I'm the only one, we can let it go.
Commissioner Bernie and Commissioner.
I mean, I still share a concern actually about the whole, the whole scope here really, of moving all of the air rights, including hoovering up air rights from DMAT streets, which seems to me, you know, a strange process, and piling them all up on Water Street. And, you know, we're told, well, we have to take that because the museum's going to get money to support it, and I just seem, you know, holding the museum hostage to this process just doesn't seem the way we should be doing urban design and city planning. So I'm still yet to be comfortable with the whole concept. And I know Minister of Lot Society spoke against it, as did the Community Board, and I must say, I still share the misgivings.
Can I just respond to that? The air rights are coming from Pier 17, and they're being transferred in the large scale from Pier 17. So the air rights are coming off the waterfront, they're not coming from a street, a DMAT.
I thought that the DMAT streets were then, after they were DMAT, were part of the zoning lot and therefore accounted as part of the available FAR.
The, the, the air rights are coming from. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay, all right, well, that's, that improves things. But it's still, we're still at, what, 12.7 FAR or something on Water Street, I believe? And, you know, okay, so I understand, well, if you have to have bulk, it's better to have it on Water Street than on, than on the riverfront, probably. But we do seem to be moving the problem from one place to another in a, you know, pretty significant way. And I'm just wondering whether that's the only, and if you, if you were thinking about it from a purely land use, urban design perspective, and forget about the museum for a minute, is that really what you would think was the best way to build the city? It seems to me still problematic to make, to move so much bulk from one place to another with all the consequences for that additional density on Water Street. That's, that's my only concern. I'm just wondering whether it's really the best way to do it.
Your concerns are noted, Commissioner Bernie. I, I will speak on behalf of the department to say that we do feel that the density that is proposed here is appropriate in the context of the overall neighborhood, but we understand your concern.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Regarding a theater, when I first read this, I came away with the impression, possibly erroneously, but that this theater might be utilized by Pace University. Is, was that a correct assumption or incorrect assumption? Any basis for it at all, other than my own musing, I guess?
No, well, that's the name on one of the plans attached to the FEIS.
Ah, okay.
Buried deep in the plans.
It wasn't a delusion entirely, you know?
It wasn't a delusion, but it's still somewhat an illusion, because it's an example of what could be.
Also, I think we want to get back to the, to the actions a bit here in that, you know, sort of procure, you know, sort of curating some of the uses here is probably, you know, we have, we have bulk, we have bulk waivers, we have a zoning map. We have bulk waivers, we have a zoning map amendment, we are moving some floor area around. These are, you know, not, you know, to then say we want to have this use and not this use sort of seems like there's too much of a sort of gap between the, sort of, you know, I'm not a lawyer, although I see, maybe I play one on television here. But, you know, there's a, there's sort of a nexus between the bulk and those types of things. Whereas with, you know, starting to say, well, we want a community facility and not a commercial use. And, you know, that's not sort of what we're doing here. I think there's a zoning map amendment and the uses that are allowed under the zoning map amendment under the zoning this proponent are what is appropriate here. I think that's sort of part of the department's stance. I see heads nodding, or at least Stephen's head is nodding.
Right.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes, I'm sorry, I had one, thank you for that line of discussion. It's certainly, and I find myself in complete agreement with the chair's comments about the propriety of moving, of the density of this particular site. I think this has been worked into a development plan that makes a lot of sense from land use standpoint. But if you read the, I have to ask about the Seaport Museum because if you read the FEIS, one of the declared purposes of this action is to facilitate the restoration, reopening and potential expansion of the existing museum on the museum site. And I know that the exact mechanism for that is not our responsibility. And this is noted in the draft report, noting that any commitments, that the commission recognizes the importance of the museum to this project. I'm reading from the draft, but notes that any commitments to the museum by the Howard Hughes Corporation are outside of the land use process and actions that are detailed in this report. I fully understand that, but I continue to believe that one of the declared public purposes of this whole exercise is to facilitate the restoration, reopening and potential expansion of the museum. Is there anything, and that, the draft report goes on to say that EDC is trying to figure this out. Is there anything more that can be said about that figuring out? Do we have any greater assurance before we vote that a deal is likely to be made concerning the museum?
Sure, so it's similar to what I stated the previous review session in that the city is absolutely committed to getting funds toward the museum and their endowment. The issue is the details have not been worked out. So the city is committed, Howard Hughes is committed, something is going to be signed, you know, into paper. But city planning does not have those details and those details have not been worked out.
Okay, but the timing of the deal on the paper, is that before the city council action is complete?
I believe so, yes. I believe it has to be worked out.
Okay.
Prior to city council approval.
Thank you.
Also scheduled for a decision on Wednesday is 450 Robinson Avenue in Staten Island. Okay, for post-hearing follow-ups, the open restaurants is listed on our agenda. I will say that staff have been working with our sister agencies on a comprehensive response to everything that was heard at the last hearing. And we will be back at a future review session to talk to you all. If there's any further questions, we can, you know, sort of take it, take that back. Okay, not seeing any raised hands. The Castle Hill bid, is there any further questions on that? Coranza Wood is here to discuss the River Ring proposal. Coranza?
Yes, hello commissioners, we have a presentation to share with you as well. So good afternoon, this is a post-hearing presentation to discuss issues raised during the October 4th public hearing for the River Ring project. Next slide, please. As a reminder, this is an application by River Street Partners LLC to facilitate a new 1.16 million square foot mixed-use development with 1,050 apartments, of which 263 would be affordable, as well as commercial space, community facility space and waterfront public access areas in Williamsburg Community District 1, Brooklyn. Next slide. The applicant is requesting a series of land use actions, including a zoning map amendment, zoning text amendments, special permits, zoning authorizations, a landfill action and a city map change. In addition, the applicant is seeking a waterfront chairperson certification. Next slide. In response to issues raised at the public hearing, we will discuss the borough president's recommendations, which were received after the public hearing, responses from the applicant on the borough president's recommendations, updates from the applicant on streetscape design and answer questions regarding the project's floor area calculations. Next slide. The borough president sent a letter on September 15th to waive their formal review period. The public hearing was held on September 27th and on October 5th, the borough president issued a recommendation to approve the application with the following conditions. That the large-scale general development restrict the community facility uses to use group 3A or 4A and that one quarter of the commercial space be used for arts, childcare, innovation or maker space or for nonprofit uses. It has been determined that this would not be within the scope of the project. As well, that the de-mapping action included a condition that the sale of the city-owned streets contribute to the funding of Bushwick Inlet Park. The following conditions were directed at the city council and are beyond the purview of the CPC. That the city council obtained written commitments from the applicant to increase the MIH floor area or decrease overall AMI, provide larger affordable units, that studios are targeted to households not exceeding 40% AMI. The applicant implement outreach efforts to seniors earning up to 40% AMI and that they use a local affordable housing nonprofit as the administering agent. Also, that the city council obtained written commitments from the applicant clarifying how the community facility floor area would be below market lease terms and that a legally binding mechanism include development drawings that show key facility elements. And the city council should consider reducing the number of floors in one or both towers. Next slide. As well, that the city council obtain written commitments addressing how the applicant would install curb extensions at the intersections of North First and River Street and North Third and River Street, coordinate with DEP and Parks to install rain gardens along the perimeter of the project, integrate resiliency and sustainability measures, increase bike parking, engage with car sharing companies, provide electrical charging adapters, increase bike rack fixtures at the WPAA, retain Brooklyn-based contractors and subcontractors, especially LBEs and MWBEs, and conduct outreach to local workforce organizations, provide service jobs at prevailing wages. Next slide. The applicant has provided the Brooklyn office with a list of responses to these conditions. In regards to the community facility use, the applicant and the YMCA of Greater New York have executed an LOI outlining terms of the purchase and sale of the proposed facility. In the event that the YMCA does not take possession of space, the applicant commits to finding a similar facility in consultation with a local council member. In regards to the mapping agreement, the applicant proposes that the city would retain fee title interest of the de-mapped portions of Metropolitan Avenue and North First Street, and thus the applicant would not purchase the floor area generated by these streets. In regards to affordable housing, the applicant commits to working with city council to provide affordable housing in excess of MIH requirements and/or at lower AMIs and larger units than required by MIH. The applicant also commits to utilizing local affordable housing nonprofits to serve as the administering agent. Further, the applicant will consult with DOT and DOB and curb extensions and sidewalk plans or reach out to DEP and Parks regarding rain gardens. Will explore the feasibility of all resiliency and sustainability features described by the borough president and implement those as viable. Will seek to increase onsite bike parking and incorporate car sharing and electrical charging stations where practical. Will retain local contractors and MWBEs to meet or exceed local requirements and will partner with a local nonprofit to train and retain local workers and pay living wages. Next slide. Also raised at the pre-hearing presentation at the end at the public hearing, the agency has expressed concern about the lack of distinctive setback along River Street and North First Street, both narrow streets. As discussed, instead of a traditional base, the tower steps up incrementally, starting at the ground floor level to achieve a graduated setback of approximately three to four feet along River Street. The applicant's proposed massing approach results in a street wall condition that is experienced as a sheer condition without a defined building base or setback zone. Next slide. This condition can be seen in the view of River Street, which demonstrates the sheer condition along the street. Next slide. As well as in this rendering of building A as seen from North Third Street and River Street, the tower would gradually step away from the street line. Next slide. In response to the department's concern, the applicant has provided initial approaches to mitigate the sheer condition. The first strategy is to increase the height of the ground floor to emphasize public spaces within the building and establish a relationship with the height of the neighboring Austin Nichols balcony, which is at 20 feet. Next slide. The next strategy is to activate the podium street wall with signage, awnings and a transparent ground floor. Next slide. The third strategy is to provide a continuous ground floor canopy to define the ground floor and further relate to the Austin Nichols building balcony. These sound approaches begin to address the department's concern with the canopy strategy beginning to break down the scale of the sheer wall at the lowest pedestrian level. But we will work with the applicant to continue looking at his strategies to establish a higher horizontal datum that reflects the surrounding context. Next slide. So also, in response to Commissioner Bernie's question about floor area calculations, the following slides will clarify how the proposal is generating floor area. So the overall proposed project floor area is approximately 1,158,000 square feet. The total floor area generated by the actions is approximately 1,353,200 square feet, which are generated through these proposed actions. One, a zoning map amendment to rezone the development site from an M31 district to a C62 district. Two, a city map change to eliminate discontinued close and dispose of segments of Metropolitan Avenue and North First Street, west of River Street. Three, a zoning text amendment to allow reconstructed in-water structures as part of a large-scale general development plan to generate floor area. And then four, the subsequent special permit to allow the reconstructed in-water structures to generate said floor area. Next slide. So the applicant-owned Upland Blocks, Block 2376, 2361 and 2355, and a portion of a new platform that generates floor area per the text amendment would generate 1,021,478 square feet of floor area under the proposed C62 rezoning. Next slide. The portions of Metropolitan Avenue and North First Street that are proposed to be de-mapped would generate 190,728 square feet of floor area under the proposed C62 rezoning. Next slide. Further, the applicant proposed text amendment and special permit. Also, with the applicant proposed text amendment and special permit, the new peers would generate an additional 140,990 square feet of floor area. Next slide. And together, this would result in a million, 1,353,196 square feet of floor area. And as a reminder, the proposed project floor area is 1,158,000 square feet of floor area, approximately 195,000 square feet less than the amount of floor area generated under the proposed set of land use actions. In order to rationalize the land use actions, the department proposes to modify the application to remove portions of the zoning text amendment that relate to new peers generating floor area. Doing so would thus better align the proposed project and the proposed actions, negating the need to create a novel zoning text when sufficient floor area is generated through the zoning map amendment and street de-mapping. The removal of this portion of the text amendment would not impact the overall project as there would still be a slight excess in the amount of available floor area needed to facilitate the proposal. And that concludes the presentation. Happy to take any questions.
Thanks very much, Coranza. Are there any questions from the commission? Commissioner Levin?
Yeah, I guess about the latter point, the idea of moving away from the proposed text change and related special permit concerning a floor area over the peers, the reconstructed peers. That seems like a pretty significant change in approach. It was discussed at some length at the review session and explained that it was, you know, consistent with what was done in Greenpoint, Williamsburg. And, you know, that's the way we're going to do it. I guess the difference here is that the streets are owned by the city and the floor area created by the text amendment would be owned by the applicant. So it seems like it's more of a financial adjustment than a land use adjustment. Can you elaborate any further on how this came about?
Well, the zoning text amendment, this discussion about whether or not to keep this aspect of the text amendment has been something that we had discussed in our pre-certification process as well as ownership of the streets were being kind of researched. And there are still portions of the text amendment that are integral to facilitating the project. The text amendment allows these peers and platforms to exist in their current configuration without seeking waivers from all the waterfront regulations. And so this text amendment would still allow these kind of really unique structures to exist as part of a large scale. So the text amendment itself is a critical part of the application. However, the part about the generating floor area, that was again, when we were still discovering what the ownership structure of the streets were.
So there's been new information received about the ownership of the streets? Or is this just a late change in the way the city wants to approach this transaction?
If I just may jump in, I just want to remind the commission that, you know, projects is certified are the applicant's proposal. And that.
Understood.
Yeah, the department is, you know, reviewed the actions here and is expressing that it doesn't make land use sense to have so much excess floor area on here. And while it's a tool that has been used in Greenpoint, Williamsburg, it's a tool that strikes us as unnecessary at this site.
Okay. That is.
Sorry, I just wanted to add, Anna, that when this was certified, the applicant was maintaining that the floor area of the streets was not something that they required. But it has been made clear over the ensuing months that they do need to acquire that floor area. And since that is the case, the approach to that is that you acquire that floor area from the city and that yields more than enough floor area to accomplish what is wanted in this project.
So let me just pivot one bit and ask if, so if they're going to have to acquire, the borough president made a strong pitch for in using the, committing the proceeds of the sale of Floria to Bushwick Inlet Park or to a public purpose, well, he mentioned Bushwood Inlet Park. It does seem to me that if Floria is going to be sold here, you know, generated by a sale by the city, can we at least commit that the proceeds stay in the neighborhood?
That I think is a question for City Hall because essentially when these sales are done, the money becomes general fund money and then it's determined how.
That's exactly it. So which is why we put the issue on the table here.
Okay.
We've had that conversation before.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, actually, I, in no surprise, Commissioner Levin really raised the issues that kind of just came to my mind during this post-hearing presentation. But I will, based on the responses and the discussion, I'm just going to add another sort of layer to this, not to have the same questions asked and answered. But given the fact that this point in the conversation with respect to where the money could be used, well, is this not necessarily, is there not a benefit? And I know that, I'm not suggesting that we give up our ability to make decisions as a commission, but I know that there is often discussions or positions we have taken. there is often discussions or positions we have taken where certain issues are then left for the council to deal with as opposed to us. And I just wonder, based upon the response that City Hall would have to weigh in on where the money would ultimately be used, or how it would be allocated if, if there's obviously a price tag to this type of a change for the applicant, that this isn't something that then the council and the administration could be discussing through the next phase of the land use process, once it goes beyond us?
It certainly could be. It's, and I would not doubt that it will be, if that is how this proceeds.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Bernie?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, just quickly continuing on the topic of peers and platforms generating floor area. I'm very happy to see that we're not doing that. I mean, notwithstanding the fact that it's done at Greenpoint, Williamsburg, I'm very happy that it's unnecessary here, and I think it's undesirable. So, I'm happy to see it taken out.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions for Coranza here? Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on, one last post-hearing follow-up item, the Starrett Lehigh and Terminal Warehouse. Is there any further questions on that? All right, seeing none. I believe that concludes our agenda for this review session.
Okay.
Right.
Well, and that, I think this meeting is adjourned.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.